It's over, everybody. We'll go ahead and get started. Um, it seems like we're kind of new this every meeting or every other meeting. Uh, we've got a new member with us today. Welcome.
Thank you.
Um, if we could, I'd just run around the table right quick. Maybe a quick introduction, a little background on everybody. There's kind of now been supposed to be your, we're missing a couple. What will it have on those once people are out of the table? Eric, extend your hand over to the audience.
Derek Rowland, uh, I'm the planner with the town of Franklin.
Okay, well, give him your hand. Many of them are developing. Thank you, Ken.
I know the old, the old resume, yeah.
Susan Irvin. Thank you, Patterson. Patterson, where are you?
Paul West. Welcome.
Okay.
Matt, please, let me count your words.
Mr. Montagen, county commissioner, right there. Well, we need a bill.
I'm the Mars President. It's the local survey.
Um, Chris Hanner is just a board engineer.
And I'm Bill Futral. I'm a skating mountain builder.
We're missing, um, last thing, John Underwood and Dugan. If everyone reviewed the agenda, any things maybe you might suggest? If not, um, approval for last meeting minutes. Anybody got any questions for this committee? It's not, I don't think, motion to approve. Motion. Thank you. Making discussion. How far, uh, how much? So, very long.
Just, uh, it's not the same though.
That's your story. Eddie, we would welcome any comments that you to have, so.
Appreciate you.
Get any other thoughts from you. Um, this time we'll open the floor for public comment. We have some Spanish individuals with us today, hopefully speak to us. That being the case.
Um, speak to the other members.
If you would please identify yourself for us.
Where do you want, Mr. Chairman?
Pardon?
Where do you want?
Where are your answers? Where are your most comfortable, sir?
Where am I comfortable here? I'm Orville Calvin. Could I ask, Mr. Chairman, I noticed I did not realize this in looking at the, first, this public comment, that the comments be limited to four minutes. And, um, for a lawyer, that's awfully difficult. May I ask your indulgence and take more time than that?
Go ahead.
Let me say, at the moment, in terms of any member of the public who has dealt with the subdivision ordinance, I have dealt with the subdivision ordinance more than anybody. Me and the people in my office have dealt with the current wording of the subdivision ordinance, certainly more than any, any, any member of the public because of the nature of what we do. Matt knows that, Derek knows that, Jack knows that. And I felt that it was time and appropriate for, for me to, to talk about it since you all are considering what you should do at this point. I, I think, I try to think back on how many subdivisions that I have represented in developer and establishing in Macon County. And it's probably approaching in the last 33 years, 100. But it would be a, a number of subdivisions. And I've never created one legally as, as a lawyer where I didn't record restricted covenants and set up an association before the first law was sold, except in a couple of situations that I can think of where the developer specifically forbade me from building that. Uh, I think, thought back over those subdivisions. Many, I've been in every part of Macon County, every minute and corner of this county. Seen a lot of subdivisions. I've visited a lot of subdivisions. Uh, I haven't seen many subdivisions where I thought the developer did a poor job. I've seen average jobs. I've seen good jobs. But in seeing the poor jobs I've seen, I will say to the committee that I favor, Macon County having a subdivision ordinance. It's a case of the lowest common denominator requiring the things that they do to be addressed by government, unfortunately. But I, I import it. The, the sub, the ordinance that we have was taken, was a canned document, taken from another jurisdiction, substantially inappropriate for Macon County, poorly worded in, in general and in many specifics. Taken from this committee, I believe, in my opinion, by persons with, um, an agenda that differed from the committee's instructions and taken to an attorney, and it was not her fault. She was instructed to prepare an ordinance by county commission who said, "We have a county attorney. She'll provide the ordinance." Unfortunately, she had never had any experience. She's a good lawyer and a friend of mine, a fine person, you know, ethical lawyer. However, she hadn't had, never had any real estate development experience. And it would be like asking a, a contractor that had experience in building one thing to, to go build something entirely different without any training or, or experience in doing. That'd be kind of hard, Mr. General, to do that. And that's what she was asked to do. And therefore, her experience did not inform the ordinance and, and it didn't help it at all. I'm not gonna, I don't believe that she had any agenda at all. I do believe that possibly the person discussing it with her did. And it shines through if that were the case. I'm going to, um, give you an example of that rather than just making a fair allegation of that. A hu, a section 159.61 of the ordinance says, you see at the bottom of it? You know exactly what I'm hoping about, don't you, Derek? Right, right at the bottom of it, it says, "Maintenance certification. The following road maintenance certification shall appear on the final plaque. hereby be the responsibility of the homeowners' association. The road maintenance agreement is recorded in very good documentation like Macon County by the legislature." Well, in nearly all instances, the road maintenance provisions are contained in the Declaration of Restricted Covenants, which is the first document recorded or, or one of the initial documents recorded. And normally, there's not a road maintenance agreement because there's no need for one because the road maintenance provisions are in the Declaration of Restricted Covenants. The Declaration of Restricted Covenants refer to the recorded plaque. So you can't record, it, it's in the wrong order. You can't record the Declaration of Restricted Covenants till you record the plaque. Yet this requires the recording information of the road maintenance agreement, which is the wrong name of the document, in the plaque. And that's a minor thing. It simply reveals that the people that wrote this had never been engaged in the business of drafting restricted covenants or, or creating homeowners' associations or crafting road maintenance agreements or doing the legal work required to set up subdivisions. And that is, uh, okay, I did, and it informs and permeates this entire document. And it has from the start. And it's, the, the document has other incongruities like that in it. In Macon, and, and I'll give you another example. It's a far more serious example. And, and this, when, when Mr. Sprinkle and I, Mr. Sprinkle has done a lot of subdivision work. I have done a lot of subdivision work. We both treat the mountains a whole lot, know how they're created and know how they're set, put together. And when you create a subdivision in the southwestern mountains of North Carolina, you're not sure what you're going to run into. And you're not sure when you're going to run into it. And you're going to start at one corner of it and you're going to work your way through that subdivision trying to get it developed. And the, when you come across a plaque like the plaques in Wataga Vista where attempts were made to, to plait great swaths of property before the plaque was ever recorded, you end up with a lot of lots that aren't good lots. The surveying is atrocious. They are, they cut right through house sites. They create lots that create bad development. They create lots that create environmental hazards. They create lots that create stream damage. So I learned early on that the best way to develop subdivision from both an economic and a viewpoint of land hostelry was to, to start and develop a couple of lots or four lots or six lots. And, and that way, the developer and the road builder and the surveyor could go in and figure out the best way to do it and create. And, and yes, Louis, in some developments, there's enough financing to go in and create 400 lots at once. But that's not, doesn't happen very often in Macon County. And because of the tracts of land, the smaller tracts of land we're left with, not having very many big tracts of land left, that's going to be the trend more and more and more that you have, that developers are developing smaller tracts because that's what we have left to develop. So cutting off, biting off what you could chew as a developer and just develop that few lots, getting them developed, getting them developed right, then biting off a few more and doing it that way. That, not only, in my opinion, is the best way to do it, but it is how, in fact, they, a lot of them have been doing it because the professionals that we have here in this community have advised them to do it that way and they have done it that way. And once they get to doing it that way, they see that's the best way to do it, the most sensible way to do it. Now, the gravement of this document, wherever it's from, Necklin, Burr County or, um, do you know what county that they actually got this template from? Somewhere down in Peabody, it was a combination. Um, when you're developing more or less flat land like that, I guess it would make more sense to go in and try to develop an entire tract and make sense of it more than it would in the mountains. So that, that concept infuses this document. That the idea is that you would start out with the whole thing in mind. And you come in with a sketch with the whole thing. And then it seems to imply, and it's poorly written away, that you would come in with a plaque of the whole development and put it on record at an astronomical survey and cost to get surveyed correctly, unlike my example of Wataga Vista where it was surveyed in 1963 and, and it was chopped up completely. And then, since then, what are, has been resurveyed and resurveyed and resurveyed and resurveyed and resurveyed as they tried to make sense out of what they did wrong because they tried to do it all at once. And that all at once mentality is the, is the mentality of this document. And the way that the document ought to be, the way our subdivision ordinance ought to work, I think, Jack, is to recognize that the most common sense way to develop land and the best way to treat the land is to do little bites at a time, phases at a time. Now, this document does, in the end, start talking about phased development, but it's after it doesn't talk about that for a long time and doesn't suggest that that idea is in there until somebody got it in as sort of an afterthought, but forgot to go back and put limiting clauses in the parts of it that weren't making about that. Again, poor craftsmanship, poor writing, started out poor and it didn't get any better. There's been a lot of discord, discord in this community about land use development in the last couple of years. We all know that. We all face that. None of us vomit. None of us like it. We live here with wonderful people and we all want to be wonderful to each other if we can. But people have different ideas about how life ought to go. And I think that when it comes to land use regulation and land use, the, the creation of statutes and ordinances, that you ought to create it for the reason you're saying you're creating. Don't create it to accomplish goals that are different than the stated goals. So if your goal is to slow down or stop development, don't say that what you're trying to do is create beneficial regulation development. Those are two entirely different things. The subdivision ordinance should be created to assist developers in developing correctly as opposed to slowing them down or stopping or making it so expensive that they give up before they ever start or creating a bureaucracy that is so hard to get through that you have to have three lawyers before you start to fight your way through it. And I will say that had this ordinance been in effect in the year 2000, we would have had a train wreck, wouldn't we, Jack? That's a diplomatic answer. It's absolutely certain. We would have had a train wreck. Wouldn't we? Theory. A train wreck of a lot of train cars, we would have had had this ordinance been in effect in the year 2000. There would have been so much money front of development and it would have been such a sloppy, litigious mess. And folks, that's going to come around again. We've got to get this thing right this time. And my, I'm getting ahead of myself, but my suggestion is you take that round file and you put this in it and you start again. The, um, the purpose, in my opinion, and I, and I do concede that this could, this could be argued about by reasonable people. I think the purpose of the subdivision ordinance ought to be that roads that get built, get built in a way that they don't later slide off the mountain. Who could, do you disagree with that, Mr. Sprinkle? That should be one of the purposes of this ordinance, to keep roads from being built and slide off the side of the mountain 10 years or 50 years later if they're well maintained. And it ought to be to minimize, to the extent reasonably possible, environmental damage and streams that flow into other properties or water that runs off and flows into streams that run into other properties. And, Ms. Patterson, I can't really think of another reason. Now, here, here are some reasons not to have a subdivision ordinance. And these goals that are shared by some people should not inform the new subdivision ordinance. It should not be to protect buyers from their own, uh, bad judgment. It should not be to protect buyers who want to get something for less than what it's worth. It should not be for that purpose. That's not what this county ought to be a fan. It should not be to create a monetary fund from which disappointed buyers might recover money. It should not make this county the protector of buyers. Buyers who buy real estate ought to, if you've got enough money to buy real estate, you ought to have enough sense to go out and do your homework and do your due diligence. And then if you get shafted by the developer, excuse me, retract that word, if you get cheated by the developer, you should then have your recourse in the civil courts. That's why we have civil courts. That's not the business for Macon County to get into. We do not need to create the county as a court for people who don't like the lot they own. This ordinance should not be created to advance the agenda of other agencies. The agenda of other agencies should be advanced by the legislation that the North Carolina Legislature or Congress or the county and other ordinances suggested to, to put in place. That should not be a part of this ordinance. Anybody need an example of what that might be? The, there are lots of bureaucracies in the world, Mr. Haven. And sometimes, and, and the, these agencies or these bureaucracies have their own agendas. They have their own goals. They have their own purposes. And sometimes, they want to extend their tentacles out into other endeavors that government's trying to do and use that to advance their own goals. And that's not what y'all need to be writing, is, is that. And it should not, in any sense, ever be used to advance the agenda of private providers. Private providers, private enterprise needs to be on its own. Whether you're a lawyer or a surveyor or a road builder or a well driller or any other service provider that does subdivisions. You agree with that, Mr. General? Yes, sir. Thank you. Um, now, what should this ordinance have in it? It should have a provision in it that requires that before any development, before any lot is sold in any development, that there be a recorded declaration of restricted covenants that requires membership in a property owners' association. Membership in that property owners' association should be obligatory. Payment of assessments to that property owners' association should be obligatory. It would be subject to the North Carolina Plan Community Act because the Plan Community Act makes it subject to it by its definition and it, it contains tremendous protections for the property owners and the association. And obliges the property owners' association to maintain the roads. Now, again, that's something every responsible developer and every responsible lawyer representing developers ought to do anyway and ought to know to do anyway. Do they do it? Have they done it in the past? Heck, no. But it'd be a good thing to have in the ordinance. Better than, it's just a little section in it right now, but that ought to be in there where you can't create a subdivision without a good association that everybody's obliged to be a member of before you sell the first lot. And it's obliged to maintain the common facilities and the roads. And payment of assessments is obligatory as set forth in Plan Community Act. And that way, you have in place machinery operated by those property owners themselves to take care of those roads. You can build the best road in the world and if you don't make, if you don't plant out culverts, it'll come off the mountain in a year or before springtime, so for a while. And so if you have a good POA in place, it will, it, even when you have situations, since we've had so many subdivisions fail, we have several situations that I know of right now where they're cranking back up and they look back and they have that property owners' association already set up, already incorporated membership and it's already obligatory. They don't have to create it again. They don't have to start it again. They just start it up and it's already there. And they, they just start assessing again and then they got the money to maintain those roads and put gravel on them, clean out the culverts and clean out the ditches and keep the roads washing off the mountain. It's, I think, uh, it's okay. The, what, the, the concept that this has of a sketch is quaint and cute. And, and the more I thought about it, I, I think it's okay. I think it's probably a good idea to have the developer come in and say, "Mr. Developer, draw us out." You don't have to hire a surveyor or an engineer. Just draw us out what you think you're going to do here on this tax map. That's what you do. Have, have you had major subdivisions yet? What was that?
Uh, there wasn't many, I think, when I was, my whole time, I think.
Have you had one yet? A major subdivision yet?
Not since.
Well, and that's, folks, that's how we dodged this doggone bullet. I hate to say it, but if, again, if this thing had been in effect in 2001, it would have been incredibly horrible. The fact of the matter is we've got it in effect and then there weren't any major subdivisions that had to be dealt with. I think that, um, the, the idea of submitting the sketch is a good idea. Then it goes on to say that you have to submit a plaque. And then later on, it seems to say that if you just do the, the phases, you don't have to submit the whole plaque. And that's how you've interpreted, that's how you interpret it.
Right.
Right.
You don't have to record the master plaque, but you do have to submit it to the office and with that, the final plaque for phase one, which does have to be recorded.
And, and you shouldn't have to submit. I think you ought to have to submit a sketch for the whole thing. But again, if you base, if you predicate this thing on the idea that developments are best when they're phased, the person, the developer should only have to submit the, the recordable survey for each phase that you go along. Requiring entire plaques creates an economic bar to development that's enormous, enormous. Requiring the whole thing to be surveyed and engineered before you sell the first lot and you put it on the shelf and you just record parts of it that you go along. That's still an enormous cost. I, I don't agree with that idea. I think that ought to take it down.
You're saying even though that plaque's not recorded, it's still, it's still having to get the survey.
I don't, you're saying you have to have a whole surveyor's plaque to do it.
Right, yeah, for the master. It's not, it doesn't have to be.
Let me, let me give you Elkhorn as an example.
Okay.
That, where you took, where you platted one piece, recorded it. Then you, when you got the roads built into that, you platted the next piece and you just felt yourself along through that land and made those lots the best you could. That was just the first example that came to my mind. There are lots of them that have done that way. And it makes more sense and it treats the land better. Been doing it with Wataga Vista. But have, have, let me tell you what subdivisions were done in a phased way. Mill Creek was done in a phased way. Hollis Falls was done in a phased way. Colles Page Club was done in a phased way. Hollis County Club was done in a phased way. Uh, Brookwood was done in a phased way. What are some of the others?
Diamond Falls.
Well, Hollis Place, he, he did that.
Hollis Place was done in a phased way.
It's about a third done. They still, two thirds of that still do if you ever.
Oh, okay. Diamond Falls was done in a horrific way that had, had the ordinance been in effect correctly, would not have occurred. And, and same with, with Iklaw. It, it would not have occurred that way had the ordinance been in effect the way I try to, or suggest it.
Walla Lou was done in a phase five phases.
Walla Lou was done in five phases. Yes, ma'am, it was.
We get it and start at the back and you're up the road and my husband come back and it's, we've never had quality.
You've never even had any trouble with roads, then? No. So I think that it ought to allow, I thought, I think it not only ought to allow phasing, I think it ought to suggest or encourage phasing and not require the developer go build it. Go spend money on something he may never even get to. Or when he does get to it, he may be something totally different or substantially different. I don't see any money on spending something a half a mile away where the money ought to be spent on what you're going to be selling to people in a way. And I apologize for the generality of that comment. And I'm sure that it could be thought about more specifically and hung down and made more specific and more precise than, than what I'm saying, but you get the idea. Uh, I think the committee is a, um, I think the committee is a, this, I want to read you this, this is, I find this so funny. Fifty, 159.51 at the bottom of the page. "Review by Health Department and Other Agencies." Now, this is where you submitted the plat. And you're, you've submitted the plat and it's not good enough to submit it to the map, but you submitted to this committee. Committees are something that fear when they have authority. Concurrent with submission of the preliminary plat to the subdivision administrator, the subdivision administrator shall submit copies of the preliminary plat and any accompanying material reviewed and recommendation to various officials and agencies, various officials and agencies concerned with new development, including all members of the committee. My gracious. We got one. 159.51, reviewed by Health Department and Other Agencies. 159.52B, reviewed by Health Department and Other Agencies. We're still trying to catch up.
That's 159.
What, what, you're reading that one kicking out with that, do you? 159.52B, I've been to a department, I've got a copy.
You probably have. That's the one that was on the internet when you got, had to call.
Okay. Anyway, that's what it says.
Yeah, it's in there, it's just numbered.
But I think that, I think that what I really disapprove of about, about our ordinance is that it was written by somebody that liked to hear themselves talking and I don't mean our county attorney, I mean whoever wrote the template. It has too many words in it. It, instead of being precise, short and sweet and precise, it's long and it's complicated and in many places, it's contradictory and it's hard to understand. And you read it and you weren't quite sure what you read, if you've been right there with me, you know I'm talking about. It's not easy to understand by me. I had a hard time understanding it. Mr. Beal, do you have a hard time understanding when you read it? You read the developer.
No problem. It's still my greatest.
It is not what we sent.
I completely understand.
What the committee turned out.
It is too complicated. It is too cumbersome. It creates, it, it creates hoops to jump through if you're a developer that are unnecessary and unneeded if you're trying to accomplish the goals of having reasonable roads and minimize environmental damage. If what you're trying to do is slow down development and inhibit development, it's great if that's the goal, if that's the purpose of it, because that's surely what it will do once things pick back up. It's too complicated. It's too cumbersome. It creates a bureaucracy, the provision we just read that I had the wrong number on, but it's one, what is it? 159.52B? That creates the doggone most bureaucracy I've ever seen. It creates all kinds of people. We don't even have a definition of what all these various agencies are. Anybody that wants to be in on it, I recommend can comment on this thing and give their recommendations to this committee. I suggest instead that we streamline it and we have it submitted to the administrator. And if you're doing it in small phases anyway, why don't let the administrator make the decision and if any agreed party doesn't like what his decision was, then bake an appeal to the committee. But why have it, why create, create all these hoops to jump through from the get-go? Make it, make it short and sweet and slick and let people be able to get in and out and get their permit and get on with their life. The bonding, I think, the, first of all, an inquiry should be made and I don't know the answer to this question. I've heard it said that this particular type of bond that the ordinance would require is not something commonly available in the insurance market. Is anybody ever required to see?
Well, Jim Garner came and talked to us when we got that and he told us that it could be almost impossible.
I talked to him today on situations of the same kind of provisions in the town Franklin ordinance and he said that Mike Wood searched for him last week and couldn't find it.
Well, then obviously, it would be highly inappropriate of the county commission to impose upon the citizenry a requirement of a bond that is not purchasable. My gracious, the first grail would understand that. And whoever wrote it without looking first to see if such a thing was available on the market, I just don't understand that. Now, I have thought long and hard about, do I believe, because I'm here, I'm gonna have to talk to y'all. And instead of just complaining about the thing, I wanted to be able to give you specific suggestions. Do I believe there ought to be a financial requirement? And I have come down on the side of yes. Yes, I do. And here's how. I think it ought to sort of work with a lot of people, with, intelligent people figuring out how to actually implement it. If you're going into the phase that you're going into, I don't think that a developer should sell a lot that doesn't have a good road built to it unless he's put up security for that. And yes, I do think this ordinance should have road, minimum road, minimum road construction standards in it and there have been, there's been all kinds of discussions, should that, which ordinance should that be in? Should it be in the steep slope ordinance? Should it be in a separate ordinance of its own? No, no, don't have all these ordinances. Cut down on the number of them so that, so that citizens aren't burdened by laws that they don't understand and don't even know are there because most people can't have them afford to have a lawyer on a leash to lead them through life. So, yeah, put the road construction standards in this particular ordinance. But let them be reasonable and modest. And the very idea that roads should be built up to be of these standards as is contained in this, in this thing is lacking. It is lacking. It is not right to say that because it's not, it creates an economic barrier of this. You have told me yourself, you don't even know what the D O T standards are half the time. They don't even know half the time what they are on any given day from time to time. What does that mean? It's, you don't know what it means. Have some minimum standards where you can have roads that can be afforded and there are other places. And I'll give you an example. When you're coming back from Waynesville and you're coming into Silver and you're looking up at the balsams on your right and the balsams come down and the ridges down towards Silver and it looks like somebody dropped an H-bomb up there and blew out a gap. Have anybody ever noticed that?
Yeah, the big, and it's like sheer rock facing.
Yeah, it looks like they built a quarry. You know what that is? That's a subdivision road. Do you know who built it? Oklahoma. You know why they built it? Because they had a road builder out of Georgia that said, "We need wider, bigger roads." Now, that's true, Mr. Franklin, and you know it. And they went up there and on that particular road, they had, they had this ingrained idea that the roads had to be a certain width. And in order to get the, at the top of that doggone mountain to get the road that wide, they had to take out half of that mountain and it's horrible. Now, if they had taken and snaked that road in like they were improving a foggy road, but built it right where it would come off, have P O A in effect, maintain it later, you wouldn't see it imposing. Flatland ideas on mountain developments is not good. We need to be able to build the roads. I, I hate to go out and see one washed out, especially when I own one of lots in the development. It just drives me crazy. But that can be protected by the H O A and that can be protected if we have minimal but sensible standards in here put in by people who understand what minimal sensible standards are and they're not putting them in as an impediment to development because they have a philosophical or ideological disagreement with the concept of development. It needs to be that it's an assistance, an assistance to the developer on what kind of roads would be good to build rather than an impediment or a roadblock or a hurdle. So, the bonding idea, I do think that, that you shouldn't, a developer shouldn't be able to sell lots until the roads are in to the lots they're selling. And I can't even think of an example where anybody tried to do different than that, but I'm sure it's occurred. It's, they certainly sold lots where the roads were halfway built or a third of the way built or just scratched out. Yes, I can think plenty of that. Where you had to have a four-wheel drive to get in and out and never has been any different than that, okay. So, I, I think the roads ought to be in before they can sell a lot and if they want to sell it before then they're, I think it's a good idea to have some sort of security for that, some sort of indemnity, some sort of bond for that. I just don't know how it would be if you can't go that far on. I guess the developers are just gonna have to, but if you stick with the phasing idea where you allow them just to do a phase and not sell lots outside of that phase, which is how most developers do it anyway, then I think it would work. And perhaps a cash bond or I say that with great creditation, I'm not sure. That requires further thought. And so, again, I think that the document we have is not intended for our county. It was a template taken from somewhere else. It was, it was not improved on and probably made worse. And I respectfully suggest that if not, that you not attempt to fix this document, but create a new document that is appropriate for our county. And how do you do that? And this is the part of what I want to say to y'all, that I want to say respect and Try to have somebody other than a lawyer write an ordinance. It's like me trying to build a road or me trying to do surveying or me trying to build a house. I couldn't do it. Or me lay cable. I wouldn't know where to start. It needs to be written by a lawyer. And as it turns out, Macon County has a lawyer who is perfectly competent and capable to write you, Mr. Commissioner, to write the commissioners a good ordinance. He is, he is able, he is ethical, he's honest, he's competent and he can write a good ordinance. I'm not suggesting that that not be informed by one of those people who have, by suggestions on how to go about doing that. And I'm not suggesting it's gonna be an easy process. This county, we are also fortunate to have other lawyers who can help him. R S Jones Jr. could help him. Fred Jones could help him. Russell Bowden could help him. Joe Collins could help him. Ken Fromm could help him. Jack Merr could help him. John Henny could help him. And I don't mean that to be an exclusive list of who could help him do that well. And I don't have a specific suggestion in that regard, but I have a very strong suggestion that when you write this thing right this next time, it'll be written by somebody who's trained to do so. And that Chester can do it. Chris Law alongside of him for thirty, he's, me thirty-three years and him thirty-two years, I know him and he can do it. And he can do a good job on it. And I apologize for taking so long. Thank you for your contributions. Thank you all. Appreciate you coming in, sharing that with me and it was certainly to be taken under I'm not gonna say full man, so.
Now, I'm just reading this.
If you would, stay tuned, man.
My name's John Sherrill. It says that you're limited to four minutes on the topics the planning board is discussing. And the reason I'm here is sign ordinance, to discuss some of the problems with sign ordinance and stuff. And if I'm out of place, then I'll leave and come back.
What, the reason we're down there is to try to make comments on what we're working on. I think the county commissioners have set a list of things that we may be working on in the future and I think that sign ordinance may be contained in that.
I was just told the next planning board meeting was the twenty to go up, so it's my anniversary, so if I can't speak, I'm going.
Well, you might, you might be better speaking.
I may need an attorney here before that, I don't know.
But, you know, I would, if, if they pass a plan, I would certainly encourage you to come in and speak to a bunch of people down there that we don't speak to at this point. We won't be speaking to a bunch of people, the part which has to be reviewed, that's how.
I just read that about five minutes ago and I didn't want to be rude and interrupt you, so, like, thank you, sir.
Yes. Hello, Mr. Charles Sherrill. Hello, and you're all under the task at hand.
Do you want to press, have any comments you'd like to make?
Talk a little bit about surety bond performance G M Ps.
I talked to Chester last week and he has talked to Mr. Gordon and I don't know if he's voted for or made the decision, but he felt comfortable with us in putting cash bond, cash insurance checks in with surety bond language to help assist the community in the future. As long as that's agreed and voted on by the county committee.
May I, do we still have a revocable, irrevocable claim?
A lot, I looked that up right now. We don't, the only thing we've got is the performance bond. A lot of counties are still doing their irrevocable letter. You're thinking that if we do a cash bond, then we would make that irrevocable.
Exactly, in order they can.
Got it, I see what you're saying. Well, what, the way we were thinking was to pay with deposit cash with the county.
And trust the county.
And you keep the interest. Yeah, we do. The irrevocable letter created. The one problem I found with it was they can extend it up to two years after that if the bank agrees after the first year, then it's second year. The problem was they could recall it after that, if you're in that thirty-eight. It's a little like the county would do.
Before, if the county told them, you have that letter.
Why do you think they don't make that?
That's what I wondered.
In Trump's, it let it. Yeah, okay. So the file could be post-bond or you post-cash. Correct. If you don't make a letter.
You have an agreement that the thing has not settled, so the next one, do you? Okay, what percentage of the, you know, when you bond, you do a percentage of it or how would the cash be the same percentage?
Hundred twenty-five percent, whatever. It costs to complete and not to tow it. Just talk about that just a little bit. I think, I'm not sure why I'm deciding that, so probably I. The start of subdivision and the ordinance are a hundred thousand dollars. And before you develop the lots, before you...
And before you develop, the first, before you sell, push any dirt, somebody comes along wants to buy a lot, then the ordinance says that you would have to write a bond, current situation, write a bond for a hundred twenty-five percent of that hundred thousand dollars. If, if you were, and I'm making up numbers now, but if you're fifty thousand dollars into the project as far as completing those improvements, you haven't sold any lots, and if somebody comes along wants to buy a lot, then you'd post, only be posting a bond for that remaining, the remaining amount to finish, at a hundred, at a hundred twenty-five percent. And that's, that's the way that the current ordinance rates. So, so the thing we will be changing in that respect would be, a couple things would be, one, I know we're adding cash, and then the qualify, qualify the visual, the estimate in the place, that would be kind of from the last contract to the design.
So, what now, what's the changes, how, how's the, what we're gonna do different from what we're already doing?
So, one, allow cash, allow cash bond.
Okay, so, we're, I posted a hundred thousand dollar bond or cash, and I've, you say I've got fifty thousand completed, do I get that fifty thousand back up there?
You request it. I'm glad you request it. That's the third, that's the third step. The, the, you know, first scenario is, I post a bond for a hundred twenty-five percent, or I post a cash bond for a hundred twenty-five percent. I'm halfway in the project, I post, I still post a hundred twenty-five percent bond cash or surety for whatever that remaining. If I posted the full amount, and then I get, and it would be easy to do, you know, get seventy-five percent through, because that last twenty-five percent seems like takes forever, you know, then I could request release of...
As long as you have, have some, you have your own support.
Does, now, I think that if, I mean, we don't necessarily have to put all that language in the ordinance, but if the county's gonna be the one writing the bond form, then the county can put, the agreement, then the county can put all the stipulations that it needs to in that agreement, on a case-by-case basis. Because I, like I said, I'm having to deal with that right now, and...
So, you suggesting that, that the bond would vary from the, 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 the development?
You're talking the agreement, what?
The agreement, yeah, the agreement that, that they enter into. You know, that's what happened with Diamond Falls, we got them back and forth, because the bonding company would send us something, Chester would say, we're not gonna accept this, we gotta have X, Y, and Z. We'd send it back, and they'd get it wrong again, so finally Chester just wrote the bond, just wrote the agree, wrote the agreement, and sent it to the company, and that agreement had to be attached to the bond. So, I guess, what I'm not clear on is, is, are we gonna be putting all these stipulations into ordinance? Are we gonna just leave that in, up to the agreement to address? And secondly, is the, is the cash bond is gonna be added in addition to the surety bond? It's just gonna give developers another option?
It's an easier option.
So, cat, you have cash and surety, you're not taking surety out?
Okay.
It's pointing this to me, so every time a developer comes in, Chester has to write a pen and paper.
It's a general agreement, there's just certain things we have to, there's...
Sweeten it. So, every time the county attorney's gonna be involved in it?
So, there wouldn't be a standard form?
There's a standard form, but roads, which are gonna vary, paving, slumping up the stone, certain stands, slowly.
Because every subdivision's gonna have a different set of improvements, that you're in, because they're not off the side.
But you've already agreed that then, uh, when you turn in your plan, and you, or your road, or wherever you do it, uh, if it's paving, it's blackened, or if the road's not finished, I mean, I, I'm just saying, it'd be finished according to the plan. So, there wouldn't be much to put in it, right?
The forms are, they're in the form, general, the form, right, maybe, just, uh...
Yeah, I can see where they might be some, but it should be pretty simple, too.
Yeah. As long as it's the first factor, I don't know.
Yeah. You don't wanna make them do anything not into the plan, or...
That's not required.
Right, in the world, yeah.
Yeah, but I think that would be very, okay, but...
Kind of year, if that's what you want.
Bonding company won't issue bond unless it has a specified expiration date.
Or always be, kind of, on the bond. But whether that's a year, or eighteen months, that's one big time, or a good time in the project, and it's about a, a season. I've got new revised orders. I've got some more trees.
Can I take him?
Yeah, if we're gonna help that.
Uh, I'll be in, I'll link up, can I link up mine if I need it?
I can email you for it, you know.
Well, I don't have a copy of the document.
Now, I'm gonna be honest with you, my copy's in red, y'all's are in black. So, even doesn't complain about my copy bill next month. But I will email it to you in color, if you, if you wanted it colored.
You're cutting back as far as the tree, and I'm black and white.
No, we will email it in color. I can play B and C, Derek, hear that? Come on, Eric. Your one fifty-nine fifty for number B, or letter B?
Sixteen.
The language that I've changed is, it says the applicant shall deposit cash, cashier's check, or the bank performance bond. From the surety bond, counting authorized, we're here. Zach, I've got road, he just went and picked it in my hand. And then that language is reflected through C. So, basically, A, said that Nacon County should accept the financial guarantee, B, describe what kind of guarantees we're gonna get, and then put the file, how that money... One issue we talked about, the last sentence in C, we talked about last month, a lot of people were concerned about the county being on the hook or something. Didn't complete with the bond money. In the sense that I added that the bond on the project does not release the applicant from liability responsible for financial otherwise completion of improvement. So, that, that would be in, in the event that the hundred thousand dollars that was forfeited via bond, or the cash, was not sufficient for the property, right?
Somewhere that, I'm thinking of one, I had to go here. It's gonna go to houses, and go to everybody. What's the difference between this and that, with the house? The other way, our contract would do with your house, he'll put up a bond, and then go about, you know, the cost of that house, he's gonna leave, the county don't see that house, or, or market, or, no, I'm talking about the house.
But he gets paid withdrawals. He's paying withdrawals at the pound, so...
I, I'm just wondering if the county's getting into something that's just gonna get bigger.
How do you protect the consumer?
I don't know if the county has any obligation to protect, so, I say, if I'm buying somewhere, I won't, you know, we're supposed to be living in a country that's firey, where, you know, the government's not obligated to protect people, in my opinion, I just think, I mean, I'm not against this, I'm not, I'm not saying that I am, but I just wonder, how far do you go with trying to protect people? If you've got money to buy something, you would be smart enough to protect those that...
I don't see how it's any different from the building codes, or a lot of other things that are designed to make sure that...
But the builder's not putting up a bond, or the sheriff of the county, that he's gonna finish that house for the purchaser. This is more commercial.
I want to have everything, I think, one thing to apply here is, oh, if it's my house, I think it's the end of the world, but, you know, you kind of compare a completion of a house to completion of a subdivision. And I don't know, just kind of thinking about, personally, I don't know that, I mean, I wouldn't want an unfinished house next to me, that I would be more concerned about an unfinished subdivision that wasn't stabilized than I would a house.
Well, I would be dead set against all this, if we weren't saying that if you don't pre-sell, then you don't have to do it. Sounds like everybody ought to do what they say they live, but I'm just not sure what this is gonna lead to down the road, if you get bigger and bigger.
No, it would get bigger. I, I guess I'd stop.
What, what else is going to county have to, what they're gonna have to protect people from? The county's got a merger to do this, either, so, if you're just looking at the merger, what county's involved in it? I, I just don't know, because the obligatorship, I mean, I just, that's just, it's not the main question, I don't know. You, you let the, the commissioner try to think about that. Yeah. But I'm, I'm, I'm not saying that I'm against, you know, people having to put up something guaranteed that they do what they said they do, but I just, I guess the whole concept of, 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 uh, I don't, in a way, I don't think the government does anything very well, really. I wonder how it would really go. It's gonna be a problem for the county, and I think you already said that, yeah.
The money, say I want to live subdivision, I have to want to sell some lots on it, that money should be held in escrow until that lot is finished, like, satisfies my law I need to.
Well, I, I'm trying that part, I'm, I'm trying to, I would buy my lot, not with the, or nobody else, selling the lot they live on the hook. Even the mortgage.
I wouldn't buy it, same.
Talk a little bit, if you can, kind of, word about situations, you know? I, yeah, I've been, just kind of concerned, the comment concerned me just a little bit, but, but the, the bond that, that you referenced to, is it the same type bond that you're requiring the subdivision ordinance, or...
Yeah, I'm, it's the same kind of bond, it's a, it's a performance bond. And I talked with Jim today, and he said that, you know, this is not, this is not available locally, and that Mike Wood had searched for a similar situation last week, and was unable to locate a provider for their client that, that was dealing with a similar situation.
Is this like a construction project, or a development project?
Development project. And another thing, we, I did find a place, and Jim had emailed me, I can email it on to the, to the planning board, a link to a place where you, the requirements that you have to have, and you have to show, if I'm a developer developing this tract of land, that I've got to show to the bonding company, and things such as letter of credit, development history, assets held in the company and personally, it's, it's a laundry list, and it, it's, it's a lot to get into, and...
That's not good, I'm ready to go.
Right. But just, I'm saying, the situation that I'm in is kind of unique, because it's a single developer, without much development, that hasn't developed property like that before. And so, it's in a situation where, you know, he's proposed, you know, there's thirteen lots proposed, and, you know, then the, the question becomes, what, you have to have a bond, if you're, if you're not, if you're not able to, to get, to make the improvements, just like this, or before you sell a lot, you have to put up a bond for the, all the improvements. But here, what you want to do is, you want to build spec home on one lot. And so, now you're saying, if we phase that, which we're gonna do, which is what we're working on, and you say phase ones lots, one and two, then that means that we can reduce the bond down to lots one and two, but still all the improvements before you can call that bond good, has, have to be made. And now, what does that constitute? In Town Franklin, the road's gotta be built to DOT standards, if, in a road service for nine to twenty-five lots. So, it's gotta have curbing done in place as well. And so, what you're gonna do now is, and that bond's gotta have an expiration date on it. So, what you're doing now is, you're saying, okay, you're gonna develop thirteen lots, but you're gonna develop this first lot first, so we can get by with that now, but what happens when this lot down here settles? And better than that, what if the lot down here doesn't settle? And that, are you gonna make him finish that section of road to bring twelve more, twelve times more concrete trucks, more lumber trucks, more equipment trucks over this section of finished road here? I mean, so what are you, you know, you, and you've got a bond to complete, the completed project, and then you get into things such as stormwater, too. You bond a complete stormwater system, but you're only creating an impervious surface for the road accommodating one house and an impervious surface of a residential home? So...
But how's it happen, how has that been handled before?
There's not, I mean...
So, there's...
Subdivisions are, subdivisions, if you have the county subdivision, unless it's two or three lots, the whole three years out in the county, we had two or three major subdivisions come through. And the town's the same, singing off the same sheet of music, there's just not any major subdivisions, developments going on.
Does the town take change, or, 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 or?
I'll take cash. It takes, it takes, it takes sure, it takes...
What, what I was thinking, and maybe we want to talk about, was like, let's just say that you, you build a subdivision, and you got twenty-five lots, you got the road built, and you want to sell a lot or two, you don't want to pay that road, that road, they've got, they're gonna be trucks going in and out of their own, that's, and you don't want to pay the, the bill.
Or would you just hold that much?
You'd put the money up, to kind of be that the road got paid, you'd see something like that. Because it would be a convenience for the man, he won't have to put his payment down, earn it, and it'd be better for the homeowner, it'd be better for everybody concerned for that.
Well, a perfect example of that, that's what, I mean, that main road going in there, it looks like cotton, so...
That's what we're talking about, doing the... Now, that's where I wouldn't have a problem with, but if we're trying to guarantee, the, the county guaranteeing to the public that they're gonna get something, I don't, I just have a problem with that. I, I don't view the bonds as being that way, or, we have an ordinance, and we want you to build your subdivision according to it. The only thing we have is either to see, go ahead and do it...
I just, I mean, it just, we just, we end up going over a lot of this up around. And that makes progress rather slow.
We can either table it and revisit it again, or we can both of them accept the law. I mean, I think, I think for what it's worth, I think that it's, that we probably are gonna have to have something in there to protect in instances where people don't do what they say they're supposed to. I think that we have to be very careful in getting what position we're putting county in. But there's something that I believe we give the county, except if we in the county. So, and provide some level of protection to, you know, I probably have met it wrong way. I'm, I'm, I'm strongly concerned about people that's buying in the subdivision, but I don't think I'm a big buyer against the proportion. I'm more concerned about the subdivision beside me than I am about me buying the subdivision. So, you know, I think that for what we're doing is probably a necessary evil that we have to do to provide some level of protection. I think, you know, the one thing that, that would not be fair, and I don't think this is the case, not really against what Barry said earlier, but you could, I don't think it'd be fair to ask anyone to post a bond when a bond's not that tight. And I'd say that not from that you can't qualify for the bond, but that it doesn't, that it doesn't exist. And in my experience with the bond is if you're gonna get a hundred thousand dollar bond, you're gonna have a hundred thousand record access that's rarely available. Or you're only getting a hundred thousand dollar bond, or maybe more than a hundred thousand dollars available. So, and, and I don't think that's changed from the way it was, or the way that it's, that it's gonna be. So, you know, with all that being said, if, you know, if you just wanna kind of think about it, I agree with Susan. I think we need to do it and move on, but I will move on to something that anyone, that anybody that's gonna have a bond has to reservation.
Well, that's just my thought.
I have a question. Just what types of liability is this putting the county into among the criteria? See what the county's got to do if I get out here and develop something new? What's, what you're gonna be liable for? What are we gonna do?
Specifically, I don't know, but I think anytime that, that you tie anything or anybody to any type of legal bond, if you're a person, someone, somebody that's liable for it, you prepare your account. So specifically, I don't know. And there may not be any, but, but I've never signed no bond like for anything that did, you know, to work on some way else.
What's the issue about you having to find it without them? That still looks simple to the county, if you're liable for something completely illegal, it's not gonna be washed away if I did.
No, no, I didn't, I didn't mean to say be liable for that. What I meant was if they, if a bond is issued from the county, you know, that, that gets them in the middle of something, or what Lamar was talking about. I don't, I agree, I understand what you're saying there, I'm sorry, I don't.
Without the bond issued, what is that?
Yeah, but you don't have to have a bond.
Finish it up.
You finish it up first time. I mean, that's the, yeah, I mean, you've got a choice in the church. It's not like you're paying them.
I think what makes us liable is that we're regulating. We're regulating the subdivision of land. When somebody divides a piece of property into one or two, into two or more parcels for the purpose of sale or building development, through general statute, the county has been given the authority to write this ordinance and we wrote it. And so when somebody does that and creates a lot for the purpose of sale or building development, this document is what ties the county to that. And that's why that we're held liable because the commissioners adopted this ordinance. And that's what makes everything in it. That's what makes the county accountable for everything that's included in it.
Are we not liable for the ones that complete and don't put up a bond?
As long as they meet the standards of roads and such.
That's, that's contained in the ordinance as well. If it's, if it's completed before, then the county has no liability for it.
I don't ask no questions about that. You got a hundred acre tract of land, you come in here with a sketch plan of what you're gonna do with that. What you're gonna do in the first phase. Now, is, is anything, once you finish that phase, the county's said that you've got your bond money back and everything. And you're letting to that, and go back to that, and you go into the second phase, it's just like a new goat. Is that what we're trying to, like before you found? Well, no, I'm talking about, just say you put up your bond money, you've done everything, that means you've got your bond money back. And when you start the second phase, that'll be considered separate. It'll be a new deal while we get.
New bond?
Yeah.
Why wouldn't you pay the loan?
Well, I just wanna be sure that, that we're not gonna hold anything back because that hundred acres is out there. It's not.
We don't care about the parent track, the board, any kind of money, or anything.
So, so basically, we're, that sketch map that we wrote in to start with is just, you know, this is what we hope to do, but it ain't somewhere down the road if, if this all works.
But it's upon you, it's upon the county.
And you can change all that in any way.
This may be a little off track, but on the, on the minor subdivisions, seven lots or less. Right. You can't even, can you sell one of those until it's finished? Is that a bondable project? So you have to finish seven lots if you do something small like that? Is that right?
You could pre-sell one in a minor subdivision.
The way right now, all of that bonding language is under the major subdivision.
But it shouldn't apply to minor, the all of them. So if you want to pre-sell a lot of mine, you should be able to. Can't sell it to me at final class. What, what does it say that?
I'm not saying it don't. Sorry, I'm gonna get sidetracked.
You're like small type, but.
Pretty short.
That's a long break. Stay on. Thought about it.
Page twelve thirteen.
Is that, that gonna be new?
Yes, I'm sure.
Thirteen in the news. Thirteen?
Twelve, we're discussing mine subdivision. Thirteen, we're talking about final class approval.
One fifty-nine, one oh six two, Mr. Hays. Do I sentence? One fifty-nine, one oh six. Page four, four, the open.
It says, let's be approved after particularly important. So, subdivision jurisdiction shall be filed or recorded for this immediate due to the vote of the majority.
So then we're saying, going on.
Hearing that sort of, no land shall be sold or trashed by reference to a plat that has not been approved and recorded according to the court.
So, so we're saying in a major subdivision, you can go ahead and get that plat approved, accorded, and sell our top of it. Before you can, you can go.
It's warranted if you put the money on site. Or you can do a phase.
Yeah.
So that you could do the whole thing.
Well, of course, for the way we're looking at it, the phase is the subdivision you're talking about, it's called the bond and everything.
Yes. Unless you walk in and say, I'm gonna do a thousand lot, here's the money, nobody can do that.
No.
It's mostly gonna be ten points.
The way to do that and go ahead is record the plat before the roads are built.
No. It has to be approved.
Well, how are you gonna pre-sell a lot?
You can record the plat without the stuff, without the roads being in.
That's what.
Not final.
Yeah, you can record a final plat.
Do that if you're gonna sell a lot.
Yeah, you have to. But you can't, if you're gonna pre-sell, you have to have that final plat recorded.
But there's nothing in the ordinance to allow you to not sell it.
Yeah, the, the, all, the only thing, if you bond, that bond is the same thing as putting those roads in.
Right, I'm on a minor subdivision.
Oh, yeah, on a minor subdivision, oh, we're on a minor subdivision?
No, I, I moved on to the major now.
You're on a ma-
Well, he's taking a bunch of miners and making them a major.
Well, on a minor, you, on a minor, you can, you gotta have it, you gotta have it in.
Yeah.
On a major, on a major, your bond is the same thing as doing that. That allows you to record that plat.
Yes. Chris? You okay with that?
Yeah, I'm good. I just wanna be sure I'm clear.
I'm not sure. We either, we either need motions on this, or I'm gonna kind of nod if we need to wait for next time to talk about it. I make motion for it. They did got a big difference there. I mean, if you put cash in there, well, that's one of the variables of it.
What would we be doing by post, I mean, what effect would, I mean, all we're doing is putting another option in there. Would we, would it hurt us to go ahead and do it for the fact of moving on? And then this is gonna get reviewed by the attorney, and we're gonna get a second pass at it, to look at it and review it again. But for the sake of getting.
You don't have to do this all over again.
Well, I'm not sure if I'm in particular yet, but, you know, I, I just wanted to time the digest. I've said, excuse me.
So what is the motion?
I'm making a motion that we approve the changes to the bondings and the cash part of it. How you wanna word that? What we discussed?
Everything is ready, as it is in chapter three.
So this would be the, the, the changes in part one fifty-nine?
Yeah. I think it's not, it's three, eight, the, see.
And that's adding the option of the cash bond?
That's it. Yeah, and language that.
And some language change.
Those language changes, basically, we would replace the use of cash. Motion to invite a second and further discussion. Call for it. Show your right hand, please. Vote. Vote, please. Report three, hell, report three. As staff, I might ask you to ask this question. Who's the plan you would recommend to be blamed if you? Frank, so?
Some of them don't have.
Not necessarily. I, I, I do like this place, so time to think it over. I, and I don't see any harm in pushing for that.
Do we got that done? Really? Thank you. Well, if anybody wants to point the most at the table in the future to make any changes or any further discussions, I'm not putting it on. Oh. Can I ask a statement? Page twenty? One fifty-nine, sixty-four, deal with road standards. We look at the bottom of page twenty, the compaction theory. Everything on the right hand side of the page is what they believe, and we could replace, we could delete. Take this with the dog, correct me for that. The second sentence says, compaction must meet a minimum ninety-five percent standard practice. It shall be accomplished with suitable mechanical compaction equipment. Compaction methods, and then this is the meter, this is compaction methods and density testing features shall be determined by a design professional approved by an administrator. Basically, what that's doing is taking the county out of the compaction, off the testing, and the DOT specs, and backfill, all that, and allowing the design professional to do what these pages do. I'm on, do we have a definition for design professional? We do, we do that, it's in this, okay.
And this compaction is applicable to all roads?
Throughout the entire subdivision?
Compac, or just, just field?
Just what?
Compaction.
Just field.
Of field.
Backfill or fill through. There would not be.
So in other words, you just, and I'm just trying to make the point, where if you got somebody that's building on a flat piece of property, he's gonna put some roads in, he's not gonna get through. It's, it's a problem area is that we've seen instances of the road failing.
So what if you're just filling a two foot shoulder to make up your, your roadway width? You have to get that little two feet of fill tested. I'm asking.
If you're sorry for that.
I'm just asking.
It's up to.
What we're saying, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to engineer, you have to have an engineer on every road, and that's gonna be a problem.
We've discussed also, a percentage, if a certain percentage of the road is, lies on field, then you need to have a compaction test, and that eliminates the two foot shoulder. Remember when we talked about that a long time ago? If a certain percentage of, of the roads on field, and we thought that that would also encourage the developer to move the road as best he could and to try to get more of the road on a cut slope. And it would, we had also discussed with that, and I know I'm grouping this all together, but a lessen in the width requirements for some subdivisions with the use of turnout, since we're already lowering and below the fire code at discretion anyway. If the lots, say if the road served three or four houses, and, and try to get those roads off field as best we could. Is that some of the, kind of what we're talking about?
Yeah, we had talked about if a certain percentage of the road was on fill, that if it were to fail, you couldn't get emergency access through because you had a section of the road fail. But then maybe those sections of roads should be tested. But if you had an eighteen foot wide road and you had three feet of fill off.
There should be a certain percentage of the road that fell into this back area. Do you have a proposal for what would be a reasonable percentage?
Well, we had talked about, when I talked with Derek and Matt before, we had talked about providing a minimum road width to accommodate an emergency vehicle, and a kind of percentage number.
It was, I think it was nine feet was what it would take to get an emergency vehicle through on a fourteen foot road. If all of it fell off, but nine feet, you could still get a fire truck through there. And that was the.
So did you like a forty percent of the road, or greater was on fill?
Forty, yeah.
So you wouldn't have any compaction for a forty percent of it was on the field?
With the theory being that if the purpose of the ordinance is to provide emergency access, is one of the purposes of the ordinance, then that would stay true to that intention.
Is that the only purpose of the compaction?
No, it'd be committed by your place.
I know.
But I mean, here, you know, that's totally up to you. If you wanna test the fill, that's fine. If you wanna test the middle, that's fine, as long as you sign off on it. That's the end of the discussion. I mean, if, what we've done here, it looks to me like is taken the county out of all that and put it over on the design professionals.
That is what I think is done, but it seems like there should be some avenue for somebody to do seven lots without having to hire the design professional and have the oversight of the design professional through the construction of those roads. That avenue doesn't exist the way this is written.
You, you, you can do that, they won't bring any road through. They'll just drive the house up to where you, you know, that would be.
The only way to do that is to put the entire project on code.
People won't do that.
And that's the way it's written, to not have a design professional, the entire project have to be.
Well, I mean.
And no one wants to look at that.
Well, it's such a big, open thing. As a design professional, you come in there and test one time. The way that's written, put their law, they're gonna do that because they're gonna worry about their livelihood.
Well, I can see what you and Derek were saying about a certain percentage of the road. Uh, but I mean, forty percent, this write-off sounds really strange to me, that, you know, you could have.
It's really thirty-five. Fully nine foot. I mean.
But that was on a wider road. The thought was if you were on an arrore road, you still had to provide some access for, for emergency vehicles.
But if we're looking at road stability in general, as well as emergency vehicles?
Well, let's talk about keeping culverts clean, 'cause that's the problem.
Yeah, that's true.
That's the problem, that's the conversation we have.
Mostly maintenance, not anything else.
You can build the best road in the United States, but if you don't maintain the road and maintain the ditches and the drainage, it's gonna fail.
But you build a storage road that's stayed there for years.
You can't, if you manage it.
If you keep stormwater and anything else, and then when the grease starts rotting under it, it leaks there.
Well, the debris often, yeah.
Well, that's taking care, well, that's taking care of emergency control workers.
Yeah, should be. Not necessary.
Well, the ordinance reads, it reads that way, but I'm not involved in administration.
If you're gonna do any business, gotta be informed. I mean, uh, but I, I, I really have a problem having an iron engineer be really busy, that's.
What is another way to determine that it's being properly impacted?
Well, you can tell, you don't have to have a dent to tell the road, in fact, you've got a road, because that'd have to be easy. You pick a road in the ground and it just goes outside, and that ain't a problem, you ain't got compaction.
So the veteran should be able to do some type of test on a smaller road, which is what you would.
I, I don't know that I have that extra, perhaps, I just know that if you, 'cause everybody that builds a road has hired an engineer to sign off on this, and have an expensive road. And roads are expensive, man. And there won't be many built. Developers won't build roads that anything that they can't sell in like a problem. And the people that want to pay for it is the people that get home. And you don't think about that when you do this. If you don't let this fly for minor subdivisions and ever overfill, then it's a pretty big, pretty big step to do that.
Well, I mean, I'd be willing to entertain some other way to see that the roads were compacted, but I think that the, I mean, road compaction seems pretty serious in the, in the mountain terrain. And if you, if you don't want, we, one point, we discussed the county getting the equipment to do that. And we decided it was too, we didn't wanna put it on the county to do it. And so if you're not gonna put it on the county to do it, you're not gonna get an engineer, how are, how are you gonna see that roads are compacted, or, you know, to some minimum standard? Are you, maybe you're gonna do it without that compaction equipment?
I haven't seen that many roads have failed except for lack of maintenance. Now, there has been a few, but not many.
Yeah, poorly compacted road's gonna settle, the asphalt's gonna crack, but the poorly compacted road's not gonna fail because it wasn't compacted. It's gonna fail because of some stormwater runoff issue, or some lack of maintenance issue. I've never seen a poorly compacted road fail just because it was poorly compacted. That's just me, I'm not saying that it's not out there.
What's your experience, not with compaction roads and everything?
Yeah, it's right, and if water will touch the fill, I don't care how good it's compacted or better than that. Yeah, if you don't know what you're doing, you put it in, there's water in there.
Well, normally, when you get a poorly compacted road, somebody put it in poorly, they did the rest of the road poorly too. Putting in drains poorly, putting it in wrong location. So it's, you can get a little lot of, it's not just a compaction that's tricky to, to figure out.
I, I would think that if you said it had to be major roads in subdivision that's handling the bulk of the traffic, you have to have a license, you have to have a contract with the builder. Might be a good answer, probably, potentially.
Yeah, but how, I mean, because these licenses will come in contract, they're housing accountable for that.
Aren't contractors, they have certain rules that are supposed to abide by.
Supposed to. Key word is supposed to.
You can always.
Well, I mean, Rockfire is a perfect example, we've found he's up there as a licensed contractor. Uh, Diamond Call.
Well, yeah, but now you think about what happened with Wildfire, there's not any worse than what happened on State Building, and you know that.
Hey, it's a much larger scale up there.
Well, but it happens, and, and you're not gonna prevent that.
No, but you can slightly discourage it. I mean, but there's no absolute, you will have fingers out of your mouth.
But do you want to saddle everybody down with the cost, and the total cost of building a road just to try to eat one or two of those minor things that will happen, or whatever? They may be major worth it happening, but they're very heated.
I thought we were just talking about minimum standards.
What do you think the cost of the mile would be?
I don't know, but Chris, I think that would.
You test every three hundred feet, at a hundred dollars a ton. Miles spot out, some eighty, two or three. That's us, boy.
Highway commission for a long time, they, they've done only a bit of, like, say, the, like, the, the apple department. Which while that was wrong, it was a good one, too, wrong.
And keep in mind, that's every lift. At the very least, there's somebody out there watching the crew roll.
Yeah, they will, they expect it to go off.
A hundred percent of the time, there's somebody there. You got eight inch lift, and if you gotta make up ten feet, that adds up.
I've made eight inch lifts.
Well, that depends on the soil.
No, you can do it, I mean, if you get a twelve inch lift and see that's a lot.
The governor's engine, we've had, hey, that one, we've talked about this, we've heard of it.
It's, it's not saying that, uh... Yeah, he has to, the engineer would have to come back and certify that it's ninety-five percent.
See, that's what would be the problem right there. Because if I was an engineer, I'd have to sign my name on that, I wouldn't be sure of that.
Were you sure of that? So, we don't wanna do that, but what?
I, I don't know. I don't have a problem with a road that accesses a certain number of houses, or that a major road that, you know, a major subdivision road that's twenty feet wide. To me, that requires a different standard than a little road that accesses four houses. I mean, they're two different standards.
Can I make a recommendation, John? Drop the ninety-five percent standard part, and leave the compaction methods and density testing frequency. Just drop that, and then, if, depending on the type of soil you've got, Chris, you can make the determination, is it good or not?
No, you can determine if you need a ninety-five or ninety-eight, depending on the proper standard.
Generally, ninety-five's pretty low.
Ninety-five would be a minimum.
It's not easy to get here in these mountains. There are places you can't.
If there's any moisture in the soil, you can't get it.
Slime that over micaceous earth, or you have to pack it from where it just keeps.
There's a, it's a spike in your graph or sort of things. I mean, you've got to get that moisture absolutely perfect. We, up there for the mixes, we're at the same issue. But we get them, ninety-eight, ninety-five, and that stuff, but you've got to have that moisture perfect, additional audience on that.
Sixty-four, they, they do a little, early savings, they had to give up on that. You couldn't get it, kind of, custard wet.
Well, I'll bring in something else to the Williams, ladies here. Remember, for that current county, there was, yes, they, they, it's not, all of these things, they're really hard to do. Course from the belt, we wrote.
They're like, they can't do that.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Or sometimes local.
That was a cottage, you know, and it's done, I want to grow these grounds, I promise you.
My dad built that, so it's, when he cut it up, it was, that's, that's what. And he said it was existing, and they built, it was a little too many feet trail. We built a lot of that. We built the road there, thirty-four. And that was a USDOP maintained road.
And he said the mistake, they never addressed the water.
Yeah. It was a green.
But you know, soil, over in, going down at the lower end of Chunky Gal, man. They loaded the fill there for, takes a must-raid creek, I remember, before I got there. And that fill, it was dry as a bone with that incident. Within six months of that, that whole thing went out. Because it had been a spring, some of under that, it was, the water didn't rerate it somehow, and it comes up. And it took that whole thing out. So those things like that happen in the mountains. You always have to.
So it's supposed to pass, everybody has on the loading nine o'clock or something like that?
I'm for it.
Yeah, I think they could have it. So that's, that. Then you're putting that much more on the design professional.
But I think he's, he's paid and responsible for that, and I think that's part of the, he is a design professional.
I hope so. Yeah, you got that on tape, that's funny.
So, just leave it there.
We want you on that.
The bike road, so not any of the little spur roads or any, uh, those, those, the lab.
Why wouldn't it apply to all roads?
Well, just to keep the cops back. There's a lot less traffic on the road.
Spur roads, two roads. Spur roads, two houses. Access roads, the rest of it.
You may have a road that goes half-mile around, but to get to two nice lots of them, ducking that. You know, I've seen that numerous places.
Do you think it should apply to that half-mile road?
Well.
Because that's a good point.
I, I don't know. I, I don't have the answer to that. I know that the more you make it fly through, the more things are going to involve building another. And if, it's like Chris said, the road's not going to fail because it wasn't compacted properly. It's going to fail if it gets water down over the field, or water under the field, or stuff like that, so I don't see words to other fly roads.
I'd be removing it from, from the, removing it from the spur roads, because, keep in mind, the spur roads only got to be nine-foot wide.
Yeah.
So you ain't, you ain't going to be, you ain't going to be putting that a lot of fill out. I mean, that, from all my road building, that I've done.
Well, you, you got, there's places where you have big fields that certainly should be intended. The worst part of the field is where it's on the, you're, you're cutting down a steep mountain, you're setting a field in against a steep original ground. And if it's been sitting there in footpath, it's safe, whether it's got ninety-five percent compaction or not. But if it's not covered the side of the hill, it ain't putting it in there right, then it's better anyway. Especially if you're part of it. Where's the legal area? It'll be there.
One of the main problems that I've seen given for is not so much the main roads, and the roads the developer puts in, it's the way that people build the houses will put their driveways. And we have a little runoff of water washing down the main roads from the driveways. But I say the.
Can Bill brought my road?
Much.
So the thought is to, to remove the ninety-five percent and exclude spur roads.
I think we ought to do that, if, if what our new management. I'd really like to see this, to allow the major fields for this. That's a lot of those fields.
The, if you had a spur road that had a half-mile of mountain, and it had to go through a draw, and you had to put a culvert in, and you had to put, you know, ten or fifteen feet of fill in on top of that. And it seems like on that spur road, that shouldn't be chat. And that's a significant amount of fill that, that is easily not going to be maintained, and it could be catastrophic for whatever's down there.
I think if you picture, or at least I picture a spur road, it just pops off the top of the hill, and, you know, maybe you see this house below, and the house.
Right, a couple hundred yards or something.
So if it's set in length, or, since spur, spur roads are less than such-and-such, would you?
Or just set at a vicinity of, 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 the amount of fill on any road, if you're filling.
Over fifteen feet high, as an arbitrary number.
Yeah, I don't know how you take that number, that's just more of a hole in the air.
It, it really should just allow the bigger fields, I think.
Now, if you have a, this is the building code requires something, if you have a vertical increase of five feet or more? For, well, I guess it'd be for retained structures, but it doesn't seem like it specifies retained walls. It seems like it specifies a vertical increase.
Very performant for that, and it, setbacks from the tunnel and that, of the slum, and the top. Is that what you were talking to him?
Well, there's that. There's also, it seemed like there was a section where if you have a vertical increase of so much over a certain distance. What I didn't know is if there was any jurisdiction by building department in a situation where a lot of fill. Trust them.
I wish you would have some kind of, kind of, whatever. There's no way, you don't think you're way tied to the, to the.
No, I'm trying to come up with a number, you know, a height of fill number that makes sense, that's not just so, like, what you, how'd you come up with that number? You know, we all guessed, we came up with the average.
And that high fill would apply to all roads, or just to the spur roads?
Is that going to be a, something that the developer includes on the plan? If you, if you have a field, if one of your roads is going to require fill over X, then that needs to be shown on the plan process so it can be engaged at that time?
Well, if you got a fill over X, you have to have a design professional involved, and you have to have a plan describing fill placement. Right?
It's like, I mean, I agree with taking ninety-five down. And this field thing, I wonder how to crack that now. I mean, you can't do it just on spur roads. If you do it on one, you got to do it on all of them. Didn't we have something in there about how to cut the fields?
That one on the construction standards.
Construction standards, so we can ask that.
You know, we could go back to that.
Yep. And see what we had in there. What was in there?
I'm sorry. It was twenty feet vertical.
Fifteen, there we go.
Well, there you go. There's your answer.
But the commissioner's already had that in hand, he would have been willing to.
But I mean, it would save us something on this discussion if we had the same thing in there.
Well, they could add it in if they thought it was perfectly in the conversation.
It would be a service, because if we can't think of rules, because they hardly can end with it.
Another item, perhaps if we're going to do anything else, we can discuss probably later.
I'd like us to take a look at those construction standards and see if we can add, or add into this description, to make it easier.
We're getting a little down in this. Yeah, we're down on Mars when we need it.
Get time, I have several dogs.
Well, do we, talking about those construction standards, if we're going to try to. Use, I guess my concern would be if we're going to try to use part of them in here. Do they just need to be in here? No, do we need to ask them for their back from the commissioners? Or do we need to just try to recite the same language in here, and what is that, so maybe fit up there? Or we change that right?
Some options to look at.
Yeah, that probably would be. We should probably have those.
I think that that's something that you might have made in the drill, that's a discussion.
If you just ask this, for one of the recommendations, along with construction standards, would be applying this in certain areas, knowing that we get to beat the kind of road tone.
I'm sorry, I don't know.
I said, if you discuss and put something in the recommendation for the construction standard, on what you intend, I'll put in for road tone.
Well, the construction standards did apply to other portions of the site as well.
In this instance, it would just be road.
In this, it would just be roads. The construction standards were originally proposed for more than a road.
I think what you're going to see, the commission will certify.
I wanted to add, I had a hundred to make us another one.
Your second, Eric.
So Matthew will send us a copy of this.
I will need you to walk us present to the board, but no, that might change. Couple items you missed, we need to make quick. The county commissioners have asked us to prioritize a list of our next tasks, and we need to.
Let me go fire us if we don't?
Well, no, they might.
So.
Others pulling out a hat. They have, we presented to them three issues that we thought, we presented one, they brought up two. One is the sign ordinance, which Mr. Sherrill's here tonight to study that. Commissioner Beal brought up the flood ordinance, and wanted us to think about that as a priority for the field and flood line. Commissioner Cooper asked us to review the high-end type of ordinance, and we did promise. The board of adjustment promised to remove that from Mr. Kelly's motorcycle track, the off-site.
So in any one of those, it would simply be, or we need to see what's working, what's not working, et cetera?
The flood ordinance is the big one issue. The other two could be completely. Jack and I talked, and our priority is the sign ordinance.
Do you think?
Yeah. The sign ordinance isn't a tax, you know, right? So.
You're live, baby.
Consensus of the sign ordinance, maybe your buyer, no more recommendation, we're planning more.
I don't know.
Good.
Can you ever just say yes?
Sign ordinance is number one?
They would like to prioritize this, because understand that they might change the priority.
Oh, yeah.
What, the, on the flood ordinance, what was, you said, there's one item?
We were asked to look at field flood line. Or not, not, we were asked, that issue has arisen, and right now there's no off-site film flood line.
I think that's really important, because there's a lot of developable, economically developable property that's in the flood plain, to be used.
We took a lot of good land out there.
But.
And the free.
Which one was that recommendation for?
I, I landed it. So that field.
Wouldn't you say that if the order, the sign order, that, I, when that was successful, what do you find?
You take sign, flood, and then, I, or you think it should be a different priority?
Okay, how do you imagine it?
I think it's consensus of the sign, I'll be close, so, kind of, one, two, three, everybody okay with that?
He was saying all I even have stuff uptown. Town people have that stuff.
Another one, we're slacking. There's going to be a planning board workshop, and I actually put on my. Commission, the board.
It's, uh, Land Sky, regional.
No, it's not, it's five, I mean.
It's a state?
Yeah.
How much is it?
We don't, we have not been emailing anything yet that we can send out, or that we thought, kind of, and I just, throwing you that out as an promotional tool.
So it's like a state training for planning board?
Yes, basically, it's for tiny wood members to learn the procedure.
Detective.
I need the assessment, or whatever. I can send it out.
Okay, God, you should come around on the top boost, man, if you're tired, man, if you're replacing.
Ronnie used to do that.
I, I know who you mean, I can.
Actually, he's a nice guy.
Y'all used to have a lot of friends at Top Trail.
Yeah, he come on Top Trail.
Well, we were on something, he'd come in and tell us what other counties were doing, what options were, and out, you know.
As that information comes aboard, she said you could come, totally.
Mr. Hayes, can we, we're going to, you gonna drive us over there?
You've got the bus, man.
Well, I was asking you a question. See, I love, you know, with that art before, you live.
I agree.
Is that how you say it?
Yeah.
I was like, spark back to.
Ace is thirty-three, I think.
Yeah, if you get off, it's like going down to the airport, just as you go onto that high bridge, there, which is the Blue Ridge Parkway, take that next exit, the exit off, you turn left.
Exit before that's going to get off, the, 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 to them, everywhere by truckers. And the red light, you turn around.
Okay, I don't know about that one, because I know I was hoping I might pull one, it'll be in Jack's head, and just as you pass Blue Ridge Parkway, there's also an exit to the Blue Ridge Parkway, the black, black left, which you have to feed out all the night.
I look up and do the same thing.
Let's talk about, talk about our next meeting. Probably, you know, somebody, just talk about that time, we double up, get another meeting before next year, the meeting, perhaps to try to move through some of this stuff.
Is that not a good idea?
Yeah.
If so, or if you pick it up, you get the calendar out. Next week's the twenty-seventh, following Thursday's the fourth, and then next we'll do that.
I can think of four.
We'll be gone next week.
Probably last week.
Yeah.
So you're looking at, Derek and I will be gone next week. Unless you want to do another night outside Thursday.
Thirty. I like thirty.
All right, so we're looking at.
When is our, our next scheduled meeting?
Eighteenth.
October eighteenth? Uh, I'll be out of town on October eighteenth, I've got.
October fifth.
We're about to get my C, my CVO certification.
CVO.
Wow.
I could bet you're busy now, but.
Derek, can you come on, keep the eye on the.
Come on the second.
I've got Tuesday night, Mondays and Tuesdays, I got a class match.
About Wednesday?
Wednesdays is good, sometimes I, it's a main, main street meeting.
What about, what about Wednesday, the third is the best?
Wednesday, the third.
It's Derek and Lamar, that's on the table.
Me and Lamar might just have our own thing.
Yeah, we just do it, so. We're third.
Wednesday, the third, not.
So ten, thirty. Send out an email once you're there.
Ten, three, and ten.
I can bring over the black caliber, please.
Five, four.
Five, four, same. Big continuation.
That's what I'm saying. Yeah. Good church.
You do it right.
Thank you all for coming.
Starting on in town, Louis. I just can't get my cup full.